I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. I invite everyone to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fellas, could we have roll call, please?
Cam Collier.
Here.
Craig Kuschel.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Forman.
Here.
Why they third.
Here. Thank you. You all emailed a copy of our minutes from September 3rd. I'd look for a motion to either approve or amend those minutes.
Motion approved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 3rd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. It's my honor and pleasure to introduce Judge Kukahan this evening. He's requested to be on the agenda. If you'd come for Judge. Generally whoever's making a presentation, we just let them sit here.
We can just shout them back.
There's a microphone here. That way, we record all of our meetings. That way it'll pick you up.
Yes, we do that too. I guess that's why I'm here. You know, when I take a hearing, we record all of our hearings in circuit court or in superior court. And sometimes these wily attorneys like Tim Baker might want to appeal me so they have a record to go by. And so, I understand that recording issue. And anyway, so what I came here to talk to the council about, I appreciate everybody giving me the time to speak so I don't speak in front of you guys very often. I didn't even know this sport of works meeting was going on. It's next one, obviously, that's why. I had to shift gears a bit there, but I didn't want to miss my opportunity to mention what's going to happen here on November 12th from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Belmont Auditorium. So be there in some fever. We're going to have what's called an appeals on wheels. It's put on by the Indian Office of Court Administration. And there'll be a luncheon following with the appeals court judges at 11:30 out of the hospital. And the law firm of Springer and Springer is going to sponsor that lunch. We checked that out. The folks down south, they're going to have a look at it, that they sponsor it, which is really nice of them. So what, I'll read this, what the official press release said. For host site, it says general information, appeals on wheels. Basically like a traveling oral argument or appeals on wheels. It takes the court or the court of appeals here crossing Indiana to help users learn more about the judiciary's indispensable role in Indiana government. They also provide opportunities for court appeals judges to meet and talk to broader age citizens in relatively informal settings. Appeals on wheels or oral arguments typically occur in high schools, colleges, law schools, court groups, but maybe even held at conference centers, tourist sites, and even retirement communities. Courts conducted more than 500 appeals on wheels or oral arguments in more than 70 counties since 2001. And then it went on to say here that all of the program predates the state. So they've been doing it before that, but I think what they're trying to do is do, take it to every county. And they have it, and our county hasn't hosted before. They've set up conferences. You know, they ask us to try to promote the judicial branch and the importance of it. And so that's what we're trying to do. And my bailiff, Sammy Brown, I don't know if you guys know Sammy. She's really good with public outreach. And she's great. Like she's gotten me out to do things. I do stuff.
She's been to several council meetings, Judge.
I believe it. You know, she's been with me. And she probably came out here about her dad. But anyway, but yeah, she's got me doing Big Brothers.
Yeah.
Last thing, Mayor out at the school. And I like today, I went out and spoke with the kids at South Adams, the forefitters there, Adams Central forefitters there, and also at the new Belmont facility there about the Constitution, 1787. Today's Constitution Act.
Yep.
Anyway, I'm sure you get along well. Anyway, maybe you just.
We did, I did a proclamation last Saturday proclaiming this Constitution week for the daughters of the American Revolution.
Very good. Yeah. So I spoke with the kids and the fourth graders are, fourth graders.
Yeah, yeah. So is this, when they do this at the school, will some of the students then attend this? I mean, the government students or?
Yeah, I should have mentioned that. Pittsburgh County, city officials, judges, the Adams County bar, we invited all of them. And I invited you guys to come on. Of course, any criminal justice students, that's who we're going to have come out to the criminal justice. I kind of thought it should be more government than Sandy Brown. Worked at the schools and she thought that was the proper group to have. Or that was the group that wanted to have to come and be spoken to or be a part of that. A couple of years ago, I went out to DC with some of my judge friends that are judges. And we went out and heard an oral argument. I said, right there, the Supreme Court justices were much like you guys are here. Really interesting. Yeah, it's really nice. Getting up two sponsors. It's just more of a money thing. You just pay them the money to join their bar, get them two sponsors. One of my judge friends was a sponsor, Joe Johnson, former Joe. He just said, hey, you can help me to help make one sponsor as well. I have two sponsors.
Cool.
It was a neat thing. Yeah.
What's the date on that again, and time?
November 12.
November 12, from 9:00 to 11:00. With the luncheon at 11:30 at Adams Moore.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It sounds like a really neat opportunity.
Yeah, it should be really nice. Another thing I just did, which is kind of neat, each county has a painting that's going to be kept down at the, I think it's the Indiana State Museum of each courthouse. And Adams County is one of the courthouses that they don't have anything from. And I just got a guy, commissioned a guy this afternoon to do that. I'll pay for the painting.
One of the, one of the most beautiful courthouses in Indiana.
Yeah, a lot of people think that. There's a plaque inside the court that you guys may have noticed it, but we were the top 10 when we worked at that last year. Now, the interior is beautiful and some, but the exterior is really nice.
Yep.
Yeah, we're fortunate to have, it's a smaller courthouse.
Very much so.
But just big enough for mine to go. Please don't look bad.
Who's the York County representative you could this represent?
Oh, the Indian Office of Court Administration. I always like to try to do a laugh. Really like that.
Defiance County, Ohio, around the same time we built this courthouse, the exact same courthouse was built in Defiance County.
Yeah, there are some similar ones. Like I was looking through the book today, and I know Wells County, and there was one that had a painting. I was like, where was that one? Was it Wells County?
Well, Defiance became a much bigger city than Decatur, much bigger county population wise.
It's a sister.
So they took the bell tower off the top and added a third story, and it looks really stupid now.
Oh, man. You know, our tower, our clock tower was moved from where it was to where it is now. For sure.
Wasn't it in front of the?
Yeah.
Or centered it?
Centered, yeah. I don't know all that history. I never go up there. I had to get out already. We have computer books up there, but why not? Recently, a lot of, hold on.
I've been up there.
Do you think they have any questions? No, no, charge. No, yeah, and then the luncheon, I think those, that firm's going to.
Springer, Springer.
You have to RSVP or?
I think they launched RSVP on the luncheon. Yeah, and I think you can do that by calling my office at 745-3077. Same thing can handle that. I think, I know, I don't look suspicious of an outfit I wear. It's otherwise, you know, firm I have, a little bigger than what they, they don't need. At the most, I'll give two votes of that. They do know, you know, some of, one of the other things they say in their press releases, they're like, you know, have at least 50 people there, you know, I think with the students from that. Hopefully, a bar shits up. I mean, it's kind of a unique situation.
That's cool. Any other comments or questions for the judge? If not, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Thanks for sharing that. Look forward to it.
Feel free to come back again.
Yeah, yeah. Take care. Okay, next up on the agenda is the introduction of our new Adams County Economic Development Corporation Director, Colton Bickel. Colton, come on up and have a seat. Colton has worked with the city of Decatur back in, what, 2014, something like that? Yeah, 2014-ish. He worked for.
2014, 15, maybe.
He worked for Christie Sturts, who was the company that we used to help us with our stellar application.
I've got two stellar applications together.
Yeah. And then from there, you went to work as Blackford County's Economic Development Director.
Yep, I was in Blackford County for a couple of years and then come over here.
And has recently been hired and started, what, first of September, something like that?
Yep, today's two weeks.
Today's two weeks.
So far so good.
Yep. And we had a meeting last week. I know Cam's on that board and Craig's on that board. We, you had a meeting for the first time. I think that he's going to be an excellent replacement. I don't know, Cam, you have any comments? Craig, you have any comments about Colton and his arrival?
I think, yeah, welcome. He stepped right in, was giving reports on his first one, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very confident.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Larry did, I'll give a vote of confidence to Larry. He did a great job for two weeks catching me up on all the things that he had been working on. So it was easy to kind of step right in and just keep going with the ball that Larry had already started out the track.
So has he already, has he passed it on?
He's passed on, we're calling it an as needed basis. So I'll give him a call every once in a while if I need things. But I do have, you know, I've been working in community development, economic development since I was going into sophomore year of college as an intern. So for someone my age, I do have 10-plus years' experience in this kind of realm. So I was able to kind of just jump right in.
Well, we welcome you to Adams County and we welcome you to the Decatur community and look forward to working with you.
Happy to be here.
Yep. I'll ask just a personal question.
Sure.
You living in Blackford County? Are you going to relocate this way?
I'm not yet. We actually just, I'm getting married at the end of October.
Great.
It's going to come up pretty soon. But I just purchased the, purchased the house on the south side of Fort Wayne by Bishop Lures in May. So just bought one, don't know that we'll quite make that transition here soon since we just bought one. But eventually, I think that would probably be something that we would do several years down the road here. It is, you know, the commute from there to Blackford was an hour, so the 25-minute commute's not quite as bad.
He's now living in a suburb of Decatur, so that's all cool.
Right.
Good. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. And while you're here, earlier this evening, well, Colton and Larry and Craig and Wiley and I and Melissa, we all met, talked about some things, some possible grant opportunities. And we talked about workforce development and Northwest Elementary School and how you want to have the Economic Development Corporation as the hub of that process of making that school for workforce development. And in the process, we decided to write a memorandum of understanding or memorandum of, what do you call it?
Memorandum of agreement.
Of agreement, so that we can give Colton the key to the place and he can go in there as he pleases. And if they, if we so choose to do a feasibility study to see what the building might need long-term, he'll be at the hub of being able to do that. So Tim prepared a memorandum of understanding. We presented that at the Economic Development Board meeting this past Friday, and that board approved it. And then earlier this evening, we presented it to the Board of Public Works and Safety, and they approved it as well. And I just wanted to bring it before council this evening to make.
Have the board, have the council approve it as well.
Have council approve it as well. So if that would be okay with council, I'd look for a motion to approve that.
Salute.
Second, a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Adams County Economic Development Corporation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. Any other comments, Colton?
I don't think I have, I have any. I think this MOU gives us what we need to kind of move forward. I know James, he's done a lot of work already, working with different providers and programming. And so this will just help us kind of get some concrete things in place that we can move forward. So thank you.
Well, we're a partner in this, okay? And so, yeah, keep all of us in the loop and.
Absolutely. We would definitely do that.
Talk, we'll talk regularly.
There's a copy for you then, Colton. And I will interject one thing. I had a chance to visit with Colton for a while over at his office, and my experience and first impression, I was very impressed. So I'm looking forward to working with Colton.
I remember Tim telling me that, when I told him that he worked for Christie Sturts, he's, ah, I thought he looked familiar.
I knew it. And I, I could not, I knew, I'd seen him, knew I'd met him somewhere, but I could not place that. And as soon as Ken said that, then I realized it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Next thing, we got some ordinances that we need to do third readings on. We have the salary ordinance for the employees. We have the salary ordinance for the elected officials. And those were both read twice and tabled. So we would look for, the first one is ordinance, salary ordinance 2019-11. And that's the one for the regular employees, am I right?
For the regular.
The regular employees.
And the last reading, I'll treat you amended to include the handout man person that you wanted to work on a handout man, that's a public works employee.
Rather than a parking wreck.
So their title's going to be maintenance operator. And it's going to be divided four ways, 25% on a street, 25% on a water sewer and storm water.
Great. Thank you, Kevin.
And then pull down the.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-11 as amended on its third reading by short title only.
Second, I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2011 in its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance 2019-11, short title, ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for employees of the city of Decatur, Indiana for the year 2020.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-11 as amended on its third reading.
Second, I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-11 on its third reading. We'd have roll call vote, Phyllis.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Forman.
Yes.
Why they third.
Yes. Thank you. Ordinance 2019-11 has been adopted. The next one then would be for the elected officials. Again, we've done two readings, no amendments to that one, correct? And that was 2019-12.
So we'll make a motion to place ordinance 2019-12 on its third reading by short title only.
Second, I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2019-12 on its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim, do you have it?
Nope.
Here we go.
Ordinance number 2019-12, short title, ordinance establishing the salaries to be paid to the elected officials of the city of Decatur, Indiana for the year 2020.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-12 on its third reading.
I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-12 on its third reading. Phyllis, we have roll call vote, please.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Forman.
Yes. Thank you. Ordinance 2019-12 has been adopted. Okay. Then we have a new ordinance that we want to introduce this evening. Tim, you want to preface it a little bit?
If you recall, we discussed a month or so ago about the refunding of the 2008 sewer bond. The purpose of doing that is we'll save about $400,000 or the remaining life of that bond issue if we refund it or refinance it. So in order to do that, we have to adopt a bond ordinance. It's ordinance number 2019-13. And things have accelerated a bit in terms of what we're doing. Initially, it was anticipated that we would close this in around December 5th. Then it was decided that we would try to move that up to November 5th in order to take advantage of the drop in interest rates. And in talking with the SRF people down in Indianapolis, which was the loan placement to begin with, or bond placement, if we close by October 31st, we'll save 60 days of interest. So we're now shooting for a closing on October 31st. So the sale of the bonds will actually take place October 17th or the pricing of it. And the closing is then, we're hoping to close on October 31st to save the interest. And the bond ordinance shows that you're authorizing refunding up to 5.6 million, and that would cover the refunding of the existing bond plus any issuance costs. It requires that the city agree, as you typically do in bond ordinances, to various covenants and restrictions. The bonds will be signed by the mayor and Phyllis as the clerk treasurer. And they can be made available to certain buyers, but probably it's going to be placed in, through the underwriter. And some of the institutional buyers are most likely the ones that will buy the bonds. We have to, there are a number of covenants that are included in this, and I sent a copy of this out to Kevin, Kerry, the mayor, Phyllis, because I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of the requirements that are contained in the bond issue or in the bond ordinance itself. So I've reviewed it. It's 40 pages long. I'm not going to go through it anymore than what I've just done.
Thank you.
If you have any questions.
So you want it by short title?
Please. Yes. So I would entertain a motion to introduce ordinance 2019-13 for first reading by short title only.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2019-13 on its first reading by short title only.
Second, I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2019-13 on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2019-13, an ordinance of the city of Decatur authorizing the current refunding by the city of its sewage works revenue bonds of 2008, authorizing the issuance of sewage works, refunding revenue bonds for such purpose, providing for the collection, segregation, distribution of revenues of the sewage works, safeguarding of the interests of the owners of the sewage works revenue, refunding revenue bonds authorized herein, other matters connected therewith, and repealing ordinance is inconsistent herewith.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-13 on its first reading.
Second, I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-13 on its first reading. We'd have roll call vote, please.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Forman.
Yes.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2019-13 on its second reading by short title only.
Second, I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2019-13 on a second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2019-13, an ordinance of the city of Decatur authorizing the current refunding by the city of its sewage works revenue bonds of 2008, authorizing the issuance of sewage work refunding revenue bonds for such purpose, providing for the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of the sewage works, the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of the sewage works refunding revenue bonds authorized herein, other matters connected therewith, and repealing ordinance is inconsistent herewith.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-13 on its second reading.
Second, I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2019-13 in its second reading. Would have roll call vote, please.
Cam Dyer.
Yes.
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Forman.
Yes. Thank you.
Make a motion to table ordinance 2019-13 for its third reading at our next city council meeting.
It's October 1st. Second.
Do you need to have that time?
Yep. I have a motion and a second to table ordinance 2019-13 until our next scheduled council meeting on October 1st. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The ordinance has been tabled. Next thing, I have a request from the Decatur Chamber of Commerce. We'll do this while Craig's not listening. It is for the Highland Games. And I got a, I got a email from Linda this week about sponsorship for the Highland Games. I thought we had already done this, but I guess that was last year that we did it. I checked upstairs and no, they said we had not. Last year, they have three levels of sponsors, a event level, a podium level, and a podium gold level, the podium gold, podium bronze, and then the event level. It's $1,000 for the podium gold, 500 for the podium bronze, 300 for the event level. For the, last year, we did a, the gold podium level, $1,000, which gives us a name and logo display on a 30-inch round display board, which last year, those were really cool. I don't know, who did those?
Rod Aneltz. And then we had the Bears do it and put the decals on.
Okay, those were really, very cool. Eight newspaper spots twice a week a month prior to the sponsors around, around logo, radio name recognition over 10 to 14 days prior to the event, and recognition on the chamber website and Facebook recognition as a gold sponsor. Again, I fully support this event. It's a very unique event. You won't find another event like this one within miles of here. And last year, we did a $1,000 gold level. I don't know if that was from my promotional or council's promotional, but wherever we took it from last year, I would myself look for a motion that we do the same this year.
I'll make a motion.
Second, I have a motion and a second.
I have to accuse myself and vote.
Yep, I have a motion and a second that city of Decatur be a $1,000 podium gold level sponsor for the Decatur Highland Games. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Craig, for putting this event on. It's a really cool event. And the last thing that I have then is a resolution expressing, expressing interest in some property that the city of Decatur may want to get because of some needed easements, et cetera. So, Tim, if you want to preface that one.
Basically, there's a small tract of ground along the St. Mary's River between Monmouth Road and the river. The city has a lift station in that area, so, and also there was a, when we had the oil spill last year, there was a temporary stone drive put in that provided access to the river. The property has come up for sale, and it may be appropriate for the city to consider buying it because it would give the emergency personnel access to the river north of the access point, which is down by Evergreen. And when you have a log jam, it's hard to get through the log jam and have access to the north of that. So that would be an advantage of doing it. It's not a pressing issue for the city, but I would encourage you to at least express interest. It gives you the ability to inquire about what the price would be. So in order for that to be done, the fiscal body, the city, has to adopt a resolution expressing interest in the property. I have that prepared. It would be Resolution 2019-7, and I would entertain a motion to introduce that by short title only.
This resolution, we're not paying for any.
No, no, no. We're not even, we don't know whether an appraisal would even be needed. I can't imagine that they would be, but.
I'll make a motion to introduce Resolution 2019-7 by short title only.
Second, I have a motion and a second for introduction of Resolution 2019-7 by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Resolution 2019-7, short title, resolution of the county council, the city of Decatur expressing an interest in purchasing real estate.
Make a motion to pass Resolution 2019-7.
Second, I have a motion and a second for passage of Resolution 2019-7. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution 2019-7 has been adopted. That's all that I have on my agenda. I know Phyllis has a couple of comments about a public hearing and adoption dates coming up in the near future. Phyllis?
I did change the Form 3 uploadage gateway, it's the notice to the taxpayers, so you know what our budgets are. I did change the budget for the public hearing. It will now be October 1st, and then adoption will be October 15.
Very good. Any questions on that, from anyone? If not, department heads. Jim? Thank you, Jim. Kevin, how's that water plant coming?
So, the building that's out there now. So, the new building will go south of that? To the south of that, yeah.
Okay. All you got. Jeremy?
Many, many projects finishing up. I'll give you a rundown on the next meeting with the four hundred pictures.
I think we got the busiest public works department in the state of Indiana, at least northeast Indiana. I know our guys are busy. So, I almost, almost hate tasking Jeremy with anything right now. I apologize to him when I do.
Next Friday will be my 15th anniversary of the city, and I think it's been a busy year.
Oh, I believe it. You can blame Don and Kurt for that.
Don and Kurt been on vacation the last two days up in Goshen.
Training.
Oh, excuse me, training, I'm sorry.
No vacation.
I hear you. Kurt, you got anything?
Yeah, just real quick, for the general public, Decatur does have sign ordinance that covers signs for business, now the drug sales. They need, if anybody thinks about putting up a sign, needs to read that ordinance first. And then, if they have any questions, they need to contact the building department.
Good deal, thank you. Don?
Nah, not a whole lot. I did, like, sit here at a MS4 conference, did some cross ratings appear along with me, so it was recertification for my plane review stuff and for the MS4 operating.
Okay, thank you. Representing the police tonight, we got the deputy chief here, Chris.
We have interviews next, the 23rd for the sergeants. We had two officers put in for it. We'll pick a sergeant for us in a future.
Good deal. Carrie?
Nothing.
Nothing. Bill?
Nothing.
Melissa? Okay, I do have one other thing, and this is something, Melissa, maybe we can even put something on Facebook about it. I got a text message from Kevin Biggs that all the excavating in the islands at the new parking lot is now completed. There's not grass or anything planted on them yet, but basically, that parking lot is complete. There's two more light poles that Biggs will be putting up, but he said that, as of now, Jeremy was allowed to remove the barricades, and that can now be used for public parking. The western half of it will be for the tenants of the lofts, but until he actually has those marked, you know, reserved and signage up there as such, he said he doesn't have a problem with anybody parking in there for now, so. But it is not a construction zone anymore. It is now open to the public for parking, so it's a cool thing. More parking. That's all I have. Council members, you have any comments or questions tonight?
I went to a IED training with the police department today, and if you live anyplace close to the east side of town, there were ordinances that were being fired up. I thought the construction crew at the, at the water plant, the guys out on the pipeline on, what is that, 600 or whatever it is? It was kind of fun, but they showed us the different types of explosives. They had Det Cord out there, they had AMFO, they had half-pound and pound explosives. It blew up pumpkins. It was cool, man, so.
More fun than I had.
It was really.
You know, more fun than I had.
But the training was excellent. They brought in Allen, was it Allen County Bomb Squad?
ATF and FBI, that was came in at the show, was a lot of them.
Two-hour training, and then, and it was cool. Well, very cool, and it's very cool that we have a relationship.